All right, so before we get started, I'm Claire O'Brien and I'm with the Northwest Herald. And I'm here with Huntley Village Board President, candidates Tim Hoff and John Pifco. All right, we'll go ahead and get started with the questions and my first question. And we'll start with you, John. Why are you running for Huntley Village President?
Well, something I always kind of wanted to do is be involved in politics and everything and I have been locally here for a number of years. And I think my next step from trustee is to assume leadership of the entire village. There were a few things that I know that I would have done things differently a few years ago had I ran four years ago at that time. So I just thought, well, now it might be the time to do it, so.
Gotcha. Tim, same question?
Obviously, I ran four years ago. I saw a need for a change in leadership in the way the village was going about some of our development opportunities. I've lived up to every promise I made to the people in the last four years. We've had balanced growth across the whole village from residential, both single family, with Talomar being filled out and M and I Homes along with Cedar Grove finishing up the last two phases there. To our, I guess we'd call it the e-commerce or transportation corridor down by the southern end of the village by forty-seven and ninety. And we've had some retail growth downtown with the Cornell. That was a priority to bring that property to a positive light, and I think we've done that. And along with the fire station rehab and that, we were partner there to make that into a mixed use with obviously DC cobs on the first floor and the residential up top, so.
Gotcha. Thank you, Tim. And my next question is, if elected, what would your priorities for Huntley be? And then, Tim, we'll start with you this time?
Okay. Priorities for Huntley, number one. It's always public safety is at the top of the list. Number two, our infrastructure program, we had a lot of development that occurred from two thousand, two thousand seven. A lot of our roads are on that program needing to be repaved and I've, under my leadership, we've taken that to the next level. And kept up with our maintenance program as long, as well as adding to some new water and sewer mains where needed to continue with the growth that's been proposed. Just continue what we're doing. We've got good balanced growth. We're heading in a great direction. There's always a way to do things a little different and it's all part of a team that makes it happen. I'm just, I'm the leader of that. So it's, but ultimately, it's not one man's or person's decision. It's a board and staff working together to make this great community what it is, and I look forward to continuing to do that.
Thank you, Tim. John, same question?
Yeah, I think my priority would be obviously to get Chrysler Road finished. That is going to become vital in, in the development of several. We have a couple of companies, developers that are looking to put in some housing along Chrysler as well as other items that might pop up in the meantime. So I think it's crucial. We do have, you know, very limited east-west routes and that one needs to be fixed and put back into operation properly and safely with, with the path of going over the train. So secondly, of course, I would obviously try to bring in some different type of commercial and/or entertainment type of businesses. We have, you know, some, a lot of the fast foods know that I know that, you know, we, we're lucky to have those as, as it is. But we need to try to recruit a little higher-end restaurants. I know we've got one going downtown. We need to have that out on forty-seven where it's more visible. Also too, some type of adult entertainment venue, you know, be it a, an A-Club or, you know, comedy club type of thing or whatever. But we also have to get something that we can involve, you know, the young adults as well as the kids too. So we need to have some type of entertainment for them as well.
Gotcha. Thank you, John. And our next question that I have is, what infrastructure projects should Huntley prioritize in the coming years? And John, we'll start with you this time?
Yeah, obviously, of course, like I said, getting, getting Chrysler Road done. The well, of course, is, is also on that list. And we need to work with the state and get, get anything that needs to be done maintenance-wise on forty-seven. I saw them out today. They're finally, you know, doing some work and it's, it's kind of about time, you know, we deal with that. Some of the other things that I, that I had issues with, again, with the state, we'd have to work into it, is, you know, the timing of the lights on forty-seven. There's just a lot of traffic that's, you know, we're sitting there wasting gas and incursion. So we need to work with them to, to kind of get that timed out correctly so that we can move traffic.
Gotcha. Thank you, John. Tim, same question?
The infrastructure project is, the question was about what infrastructure projects? Okay.
Yeah. What should Huntley prioritize in the coming years on that?
Obviously, that's been one of my campaign goals since I started as village president in two thousand twenty-one was the infrastructure. I alluded to it to the last question we had. Just to clear things up on Chrysler Road, John, you were off the board for two years and this has been an ongoing project since two thousand fifteen. We have hit every mark from the engineering standpoint from twenty-one till now, which we're through phase two into the final phases. Where I've heard you say a couple of times that if you were in office, that project would be underway and done. The plan is
Done. It's not underway.
It would be underway, but it wouldn't be because we've hit every single mark that we've been given by every state agency that we've had to deal with. It's not that we haven't done anything that we've missed a mark on. There's nothing we could have done with the plan that's in place to have it be any faster than it is today. So I'm just want to clear that up. Like I said, the infrastructure with our roads that were put in twenty, twenty-five years ago, we got to keep up on that like we have. And we've been a little more aggressive than we had in the past with that, using our MFT money. Coincide with that, the well that we've done, number thirteen, we've got enough water right now for what we have. We still got two thousand acres south of the tollway. My vision two years ago when we started that project was to be forward-thinking, so we're not behind the eight ball. Part of the community has been successful is because of planning that went into things and everything has been done ahead of where it's been needed. So we're not playing catch-up. And to continue that along with our balanced growth, I think are the key priority is to keep us moving forward. As far as the state's concerned with IDOT and some situations we have there. I was down in Springfield actually last week and they're under huge constraints themselves with what they can do every chance I get. Plowing's a major issue with us with IDOT. We are between two districts with the county line falling where it is. And I've been fighting for, ever since I've been going down there, that we need a little more attention in the winter months with the plowing. Because it seems like we're always last when it gets done. So there's some constraints with IDOT that, you know, are out of our control, but the squeaky wheel gets the grease. So we make sure our attention's heard where it needs to be. I got a great relationship with all of our representatives and senators. And there's been numerous times where if I've got a problem, I can pick up the phone and call them and try to help get things alleviated that way. And as far as the traffic timing lights with the lights with IDOT, with that wonderful railroad that we have that runs across forty-seven at a forty-five degree angle. That's in the railroad and IDOT's hands for the timing of the lights. And the village doesn't have anything to do with it. And when we ask to get those lengthened for the same reasons that Mr. Pifco alluded to, that's the answer we get is it's, it's between the IDOT and the Union Pacific with the rail that controls that. So that has no village control as much as we want to talk about it.
Thank you, Tim. And that brings me to my next question. Huntley has been selected for a stop on the Rockford Metro Line. Where should a station go and what other changes should Huntley make to potentially accommodate a station down the line? Tim, we'll start with you this time?
All right. Yeah, a couple of years ago, we'll go back ten years where in fourteen, we were supposed to be ready to take passengers for Amtrak in fifteen. There again, the village hit every mark we needed to with that plan as far as having a spot laid out with, you know, a sighting for downtown for there to be a stop. And that went away. Two years ago, two and a half years ago, there's a press conference in Rockford, I'm sure we all remember, that got on and said, oh, there's going to be a stop in Huntley. And that was nobody from the state or Metro contacted us prior to that. So that was, that was kind of a surprise to us. So at that point, I set up a meeting with all the powers that be. There was, we had representatives from the state there, senators, representatives from Metro, IDOT, and everybody that would be involved to have a meeting on-site because you can look at it on a map on a Zoom call and it looks pretty impressive. And when you stand down there on-site, you realize that there's some, there's some issues that are out of everybody's control, including the placement of the station downtown that will back up traffic. However, many times a day, a train stops there because of its proximity to Maine and forty-seven. The way that our streets are situated down there make it a little difficult. And the reason why they picked Huntley downtown was because of the point, we just spent three and a half million dollars on their parking lot and was ready to go. My comment back then was, well, we put that in for our residents and our community and obviously being a partner with the powers that be is important, but it's not a freebie. The other side to consider is of whether it's a station or platform that's on the village Huntley to provide. That's not included in the IDOT's monies that they've got set aside. I've said all along, if we're going to do a train station in town, that's a big if. You got one chance to do it and do it right. And it might be something that we, the benefits don't outweigh the risks. I don't think downtown personally is the best place for it. Just because of the traffic we have down there, it's congested with forty-seven and Maine. If there were to be a train to stop there, we have other places that we've discussed. One being out by Chrysler Road. But I ultimately think at the end of the day, you know, I've asked for questions on ridership and cost of what it's going to be for this to move forward and nobody can seem to get us the answer. From IDOT to our state legislators that are, you know, I'm in contact with is where's the numbers lying? Because I won't make a decision or present it to our board without having the key information to make a well-informed decision. Knowing what we know now, like I said, we don't have all the answers, so it's hard to speculate. I don't want to speculate. But if we were to do a station, we've got room out by Chrysler Road that we've discussed on various occasions. And like I said, there's some, there's some definite, definite financial resources that have to be figured into this equation. On top of it, it's good for the community or not. So there's a lot of decisions to still be thought of with questions and answers, and we don't have those yet. So I don't want to speculate, but like I said, we got one chance to do it and do it right if, if it's feasible and if it's something we want. But I don't believe the downtown station is the spot for it.
Thank you, Tim. John, same question?
Yeah, this is kind of one of the things that I do agree with, with Tim on. Downtown is not the place for it. Back even before Tim got on the board, we were talking about planning and everything. And there was actually two spots. There was Coin Station Road and Chrysler Road. That was the two areas that were picked. Coin Station Road kind of left out of the equation because of issues with land in the area of water, you know, swampland and everything, as well as the Conservation District. They had some property that they weren't going to let us use for a train station and everything. So ultimately, we said at that point in time, hey, if we ever get a, a train through here, you know, it's going to have to be probably be Chrysler Road at that point. That was considering that it would be a regular commuter train. Here, we're only talking about a passenger train. So, you know, what, maybe two, two or four stops went in each direction during the day type of thing. Again, I don't, you know, don't think that downtown is definitely the area to look at. And quite honestly, if we don't get the trains up here at all, I would lose any sleep over it.
Thank you, John. And my next question is, speaking of downtown, Huntley is planning to open up some incubators over at the Hackett House this year. And what does success look like for the incubator project? John, we'll start with you.
Well, you know, obviously we have all of them filled and people, you know, coming there to, to do their, their shopping. Our plans are to have that open during any Village Huntley events that are downtown and specifically like, you know, farmer's market on the weekends and such. So it's kind of an extension of the farmer's market in one sense. But also to be freestanding so that, you know, when the hours that we decide to have them, let them be open. People can stop by there and with the drawing, you know, having those out by forty-seven, kind of a, hey, I'm driving past here. Let's go, let's go check that out again, you know, maybe turn around and come back and, and see what's that all about. Let's go have dinner someplace downtown as well. So it's, you know, to me, it's, it's a great idea. I like that location. And with, with that, I think, you know, we just make sure that everything is in place.
Thank you, John. And Tim, yeah, what does success look like for the incubator shops?
The incubator shops was a thought we've discussed and it was probably in the fall of twenty-one, beginning of twenty-two that we started discussing it. Will be the first municipality, I believe, that's solely taking that kind of a program under our own wing where in other communities, I know there's a foundation and some Chamber of Commerce activity involved. And that's part of what's taken us a little longer than some of the other ones in the communities that are surrounding us. With that also being said, is through my relationships again with not only our state representatives, but Representative Underwood was our rep in Washington at the time. She reached out to me and asked if there was any projects that we needed any help with, that they could be of assistance. And that was the one that I brought up to her and she came out and obviously thought it was a great idea. We ended up getting, like I said, nine hundred and seventy-five thousand for that project. So success there for me looks like, I've been fortunate to have grown up in a family business. And there's a lot of people that, you know, through, you know, Pinterest and other sites that they've got a, a dream to open their own business. And I think the spirit of entrepreneurship is awesome. And the whole point of this is to, you know, if somebody has a little shop they want to try it with, it gives them a true dose of they need to have a business plan. They need insurance. They're going to have to set up hours. And they're going to have a true taste of what being an entrepreneur is. And the part I like the most about it is I hope there's a, a success to it where it's a year or two they're in there and then they decide, hey, this is what I want to do and I've made enough success that I can now invest in a brick and mortar spot for a permanent location. And this is my, my dream becomes a reality of a business. So like I said, it's, it's not so much numbers on my behalf of how many of the shops we have full. Actually, we'd like to have them all full. And we've got some pretty good interest. But I think the spirit of the program is what's probably going to be determining the success for me is you, you're helping people that want to take that step, but at the same token, they can try this out and they don't have to get a second mortgage or a line of credit on their house. And then if it doesn't work out, now we've got an empty business with nowhere to go and somebody put a second mortgage on their home and now they're strapped financially. Because it wasn't everything they thought they were, where it gives, is like a little stepping stone where they can kind of dip your toes in the water, so to say. And I think it'll be successful on that key all the way around. The longevity of it, that's an unknown because it's relatively new concept. You know, Batavia's had it for a few years and they keep adding. So like I said, I think there's, there's different ways to measure success with it, but it's from an economic development standpoint. It's that true homegrown development of, you know, a business starting from a dream into a reality. So that's, like I said, I'm extremely proud of where we're gotten with it. I know it's taken a little longer time-wise that some would like to see, but there again, it's you got one shot to do it and do it right. And you know, like I said, tying it into the downtown helps. Sorry.
No, no, you're good. Yeah. Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that, Tim?
Oh, no, sorry. I'm just trying to shut the answering machine off.
You're good. Yeah, our next question. I know that Huntley, you know, in the last year or so, among other developments, there's been a three hundred apartment or roughly three hundred apartment complex that's been approved and then a forty-one house development over that way to Stillwell Grove. But I did want to ask, like, what sort of residential development should Huntley prioritize and where in Huntley is a good spot for it? And then, Tim, we'll start with you this time?
The residential component of our growth, the multifamily aspect of it is something that I think we've been lacking through all of our growth in the last thirty years. It's been a, and it's been a double-edged sword because we have our design guidelines, which make us the welcoming, inviting, unique community that we are. But also with that comes some, a little more cost to a developer when they're looking to do a development. So the balancing act with that, with the multifamily part especially, is keeping it attainable for residents. And with the projects you mentioned, including Lennar over by Regency, Huntley, Stillwell Grove, and then the apartments, and the apartments is, it's another thing we needed, but there again, we made that into a mixed use where we kept the commercial frontage on the forty-seven side. So it's not purely a residential component, but it works. And we need that commercial component to make up that work. So like I said, going back is the, the multifamily is a piece we were lacking with the new development we have. And those three, I think Stillwell Grove is more or less a single-family development on smaller lots. But if you add an M and I Homes that's been before us conceptually behind Walmart on the east side there, we've filled that gap of the multifamily and it's, it's a mix of owned product. We got duplexes over by Regency Square along with traditional townhomes and the urban-style townhomes. So I think it's the, the tricky part with the, the multifamily is getting a balance of that there is something for everybody. And I think we've done a pretty good job at that with the different plans. It's not very monotonous. The other part that's hard for some to understand is there's a generation out here now in general that isn't necessarily looking for the single-family home on the acre or half acre, quarter acre lot where they don't have to cut grass. So there, there's a, there's a niche in this market that not only for new homeowners or, you know, residents that are returning home from college or moving back to town to have a place to go, but also the families that were a family of four or five, that the kids went away from college and now they don't need the three, four, or five thousand square foot house, maybe in Talomar or M and I Homes, that there's an option for them to still live in town on a smaller scale. So I think we've hit a pretty good balance right now with all of our residential development. And like I said, we've, we've been, it got a few knocking on the door again to do a little more. Hayday was in front of us. I'm sure you're aware, but the, my biggest concern there was the piece of property they wanted to go on is still a very important or part of our commercial corridor. So like I said, I think the right fits we have are good with, you know, the residential component. And, you know, it's, it's like I've said from the start, it's a balancing act to keep your, your growth balanced. So you're not having an industrial side or having an all-housing side. Because that's what keeps our taxes and our costs of doing business where they are, so.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, John, same question. What sort of residential development should Huntley prioritize and where in Huntley should it go?
Yeah, there's, there's some that, you know, obviously the, the apartments that are down by the Culvers and such, whatever. I mean, I was, I was glad to see that, that development come through. And as mentioned, it was, you know, we've got the commercial that, yeah, the commercial part of it as well, which is, you know, something that, you know, Hayday wouldn't have, wouldn't have agreed to, didn't have enough room to. So, you know, at that point, for the same reason, you know, I didn't, didn't particularly care for the location for them. The M and I Homes, you know, good spot for it, good development on that side. I would like to see something come up on the north side. And one of the things, living in the city, you know, you walk down any street, you know, pick, pick a major street walking down and you got stores on the first floor and you got apartments up on top. That's something, of course, you know, Hill Grove has done that. They tore down that whole corner and, and the bowling alley and they're, they're starting to do that. That is something I would like, love to see up on the north side, you know, like basically north of Algonquin. We need to spark some development up there. You know, we've got the whole, the whole area behind, behind that where the, the golfing range used to be. So we need to find somebody to come in and develop that area. You know, clean up a little bit up on, on the north end and even bring in some more, you know, businesses up on that part. You know, a lot of people have complained about it. We've only been servicing the south end and, you know, but yet we do have some, obviously some businesses that are up there, so.
Yeah, thank you, John. I know you guys both touched on commercial development a little bit in your answers. But I did want to ask, what sort of businesses should move to Huntley and should Huntley offer any incentives to developers? And what might that look like? And then, John, we'll start with you this time?
Yeah, I mean, I, I mentioned some of the stuff earlier, different housing with, with the, you know, the stores commercial on, on the first floor and that would take a bit to, to put together. And the other thing too is, you know, we have different, different areas that would have, need to, to be developed as far as any incentives that would go. We take that on a case-by-case basis and we have to see what, what they're asking for versus what we, we feel we can offer them. It's nothing that, you know, and there, there's no guidebook that says thou shall, you know, give everyone X number of dollars type of thing. So we deal with, with that as we can.
Thanks, John. Tim, same question?
Yeah, there again, I'm going to go back to our, our vision for, I'll start with our comp plan. We've updated that for the first time since two thousand two. That's wrapping up. So I think that's a, a good roadmap of, you know, what needs to go where for, you know, our corridors of whether we've got, you know, business, retail, whatever it is. You know, there again, on my first two years, I know our economic development team has exhausted every opportunity to look at, you know, everything. I mean, we get clamored about Portillo's, Chili's, you name it, you know, we've looked at it from the restaurant side. As you're well aware, Claire, we hired the retail coach and I, we spent a little economic development money there because I was actually on a, a call with Village Manager Johnson for continuing education. And that got brought up by some of the other municipalities. So I asked him, I said, well, let's look into it. And there was kind of a two-fold thing for me is I, I wanted to believe in my heart of hearts that we'd been reaching out through our own economic, economic development team within the village and doing everything we could. But by the flip side, I didn't want to miss an opportunity that could be had in front of us that we didn't turn over every rock, so to say, that, you know, for the commercial, the business end for everything. And so we hired a retail coach and good, bad, or indifferent, their homework and research that they did came back with the same results that we had had internally. So some people might think that that might have been a waste. The way I look at it is it was a checks and balance to make sure that we didn't miss anything and we hadn't. The number one really caveat there as it comes back is the rooftop numbers on the bedrooms and that drives the economic growth of, you know, the commercial sector. So that goes back to lacking the multifamily, right? So when you add in the rooftops there, that should help that whole corridor work as well. As far as up on the north end of town, Trustee Pifco is right, there are some vacancies there. But there's also, you know, it's, there against a double-edged sword is depending on what rents are and what the landowners want to be done or happen. We can't force them to run it out or lower the rates of what they want to see something that we want there with an incentive. And that's where, you know, free market economy comes into play and it's, you know, landowners have rights too. To circle out your question with incentives to businesses, I'm not really a huge supporter of, you know, the, the incentives upfront like we had. you know, the, the incentives up front like we had with Walmart. Um, some might say we needed that to get them in the door. I wasn't on the board at that time, so I won't be critical of that. Uh, we have done some business development agreements with some, uh, businesses in town, one being the Ford dealer with their parking lot expansion. Um, there were some sales tax incentives and it's all on the backside after they meet, um, a goal or a number that they hit and then it, the, the split starts there. Uh, just a quick example on that one. We looked at where their numbers were from the previous owners to the current owners and we based our numbers there and our numbers there were almost double of what the average was prior to the sale before that incentive kicks in. So, um, I believe in incentives. There's gotta be a return on it for the business owner. But the village also has to make sure we're taking care of first and foremost as we would, so it's not a burden on our taxpayers. Um, so like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of incentives to a point where if it helps with some, uh, recruitment of employees, some things like that and, but with, it's always on the backside. And there's gotta be a return that's gonna be valuable to the village and the, um, the business itself. Um, the other question I get is what incentives did you give Amazon to get them here? On the flip side, there's one where, um, the developer in that case actually gave the village a million dollars and we didn't give them an incentive to come to Huntley. Um, and then along on the other side with the other project on the west side of forty-seven, um, there was not a substantial amount there with those two, um, I guess you'd call those incentives to the village um, that were taken care of. We put in the, uh, gravity sewer line that it was a cost of between a million and a half and a million and seven. Um, that was purely paid for by the development community that didn't go as a burden on our residents. So, um, in that case, it was almost, I don't wanna say, uh, a reverse incentive, but it was an incentive towards the village uh, where we are on the receiving end, not on the giving end. So, uh, it's, it's case by case, but, uh, definitely um, make sure that our needs are taken care of with our infrastructure and, uh, what we need first for us. And then if there's a way that we can help a business on the backside, um, it's a win-win for all of us. And I've, I've gone about that, that way and I don't, I plan to, to continue.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. And then my next question, um, I know we talked a little bit about forty-seven and, you know, I ninety. Um, but what are some of the things that Huntley should do between, you know, I ninety and Big Timber Road? And then, yeah, Tim, we'll start with you this time.
All right. Um, yeah, between I ninety and Big Timber, there's a little less than two thousand acres there that's in, within our planning jurisdiction and our boundary agreements between, uh, Pingree and Hampshire. Um, there, it's, it's part of our commercial corridor still. Um, I know at one point there was talk of maybe some residential, maybe twenty, twenty-five years ago. Um, but the way we've got that drawn on our comp plan now, it hasn't been, um, finalized. But that's more for some more of the commercial corridor with the full interchange being there. It makes sense. Um, like I said, you got an interstate and a state road. So, um, you know, that's one where we've entertained, um, you know, I, just for an example, I've got, there's always a clamoring for, oh, we need a, a sports complex in town. Um, depending on what you wanted to do, um, whether it be an outdoor field type or something like that, I think could be a good thing down there and it would fit. Um, there are definitely some, uh, earthwork challenges down on that end of town with, uh, the material that's, that's naturally there. There's some peat ground and some, um, it's a little, it's, it can be done. Uh, but it's a little difficult and costly to build. So, um, I see that continue as part of our commercial corridor, maybe a little um, entertainment part down there depending on the developer. But there again, when you look at the costs for what um, the development costs are, not on the village's side, but with, um, just the cost of getting your site work done. Um, it can be a little challenging. So, um, I'm optimistic. We'll see something down there. Uh, I don't know if sooner rather than later is gonna be the right term, but maybe if there's the next phase of a corridor to be um, worked on from the commercial standpoint, um, I think that would be it. And it makes sense because you've got, um, you know, your trucks and your traffic that are right there local to ninety and forty-seven not going through town, um, on that aspect. So I think we've done a pretty good job with the comp plan and we stick with that. It's a good ro- roadmap, so.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. John, same question?
Yeah, I'm, I was just thinking about the, uh, chuckling I was doing. The, um, way back when we knew it was that, that southwest corner, uh, you know, the company that owned, the developer that owned that property had grandiose plans of, I think it was some type of a, of, you know, like a mini mall type of thing. And, you know, now of course, part of that went to, um, the, uh, Forest Reserve District. So that's not, you know, obviously they've, the, the bank still owns some of that property as well. So, but, um, you know, I mean, the standing joke was when, uh, when the, uh, the Cubs were looking for a place to move, you know? Me being a Sox fan, I just told Mr. Johnson, I says, let's see if we can get the Cubs out here. So, that's exactly what he did too.
I wasn't coughing for that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all. Um, I mean, obviously Dave knows I'm a Sox fan, so I wouldn't be doing that. But if it turned out to be a business, um, you know, profitable for, for everyone around the area or whatever to have that here, more than happy to accept them. Um, but same thing, uh, you know, we've got our comp plan, what we're looking at down there and what's gonna end up happening, uh, you know, it's, it's hard to say right now. Uh, things are unstable to a point. So it's all gonna depend on, you know, the economy, I guess, too. Um, you know, hopefully we don't get stuck like we did in oh seven, oh eight. I mean, you know, everything shut down at that point. So we just have to, uh, you know, kinda play it by ear. But, you know, like you say, following our, our plan would, would work out best to divert from that if it's, if it's beneficial for the community and, and the developer as well. You know, I could see it us changing.
Yeah, thank you, John. And then my last question for both of you. Was there anything else that you wanted to share that we haven't touched on during this interview? Then, yeah, John, we'll start with you.
Honestly, I mean, the only thing I could think of is really, um, you know, again, coming from the city, you walk out to the main, you walk out to a corner and you get on the bus and the bus takes you all over the place. You ain't got that over here. And, uh, while we're not gonna be able to supply that because that's not our, our forte. Hey, uh, we need to work with pace and, and, you know, whoever else is involved with this, whether it's the county or, or whatever and, and try to get some type of public transportation through the area. I think, uh, you know, I know we've had the, the buses that, uh, the county's paying for now to, you know, you could dial a ride type of thing and, you know, you get people that'll go to the hospital or, you know, to their doctor's office or whatever. Um, that's all fine and dandy, but if I wanted to go to, let's say, uh, you know, somewhere in Elgonquin and twenty-five and Elgonquin Road or whatever, I mean, that's out of the, out of the realm of what they would look at, but, you know, something to connect all that. So we're back to the walkability and the, and the ease of traveling as well to, uh, public transportation wise.
Yeah, thank you, John. Tim, anything else you wanted to add?
No, I just, uh, I appreciate the, uh, time for the interview. Um, I guess, you know, the big thing is, is just I'll hit on, uh, the three main points that, uh, we've kind of touched on, you know? Um, public safety's always been a priority. Um, you know, there again, under my leadership, we hired Patrick Ulrich, who's our, uh, community, uh, can't remember the exact title, but it's our, uh, emergency management, um, coordinator. And you can never be too prepared for anything and that's paid off well, as you know, uh, we did a couple tabletop exercises and the, uh, um, mock deal out at the school last year for, uh, you know, just being prepared. So that's, that's top of the list. Um, the balanced economic development that we have had in the last four years, um, not only from the residential, the multifamily, you know, the all very, all variations of residential to the commercial and the industrial corridors. Um, we've still got plenty of room to grow. And, uh, it's just gotta be, like I've said all along, is growth's gotta pay for growth. You can't stop it. Um, we can control it and put our parameters on it and there's gotta be a community benefit at the end of the day. And I think we've done a pretty good job of, uh, having that over the last four years and I look forward to that in the future. Um, another thing we didn't really touch on is our budgets. Um, there again, under the last four years, we've expanded our infrastructure program and, uh, we've had balanced and award-winning budgets every year. Um, we've looked to the future with, uh, the addition of well thirteen. And, uh, like I said, the Chrysler Road project is a priority and has been. We've been working on it for ten years. Um, I'm extremely hopeful that we can get that one done. Um, but as I said earlier, we are right now again at the mercy of, uh, Union Pacific and the state with, uh, some licensing agreements between some issues there. So, uh, like I said, I'm hopefully, and hopefully optimistic that that continues. Um, it's just to keep, keep everything rolling and, uh, you know, if we gotta tighten the belt a little bit, so to say, not knowing um, what's coming down the pike with the, uh, the way the economy is. Um, we've done a very good job of planning, uh, financially for that. Um, so we, we won't be strapped, but we've got, we got some room where we can work. But, uh, depending on state and federal funding issues, that will always directly affect, um, how we do things. So it's just, uh, it's a balancing act, um, with all that, when you've got all the different agencies involved. And, uh, like I said, it's, it's been, uh, a good four years. I look forward to another four. Um, like I said, I, John and I have a lot of the same, um, ideas, been on the board together. So it's, uh, it's a good thing all the way around, but it's just the, the path we've been on the last four years has been positive and I continue to stay it and look for, uh, other options that could come our way to be beneficial in the future.
Yeah, thank you, Tim.